I'd like to go ahead and start. I'd like to thank everybody for coming this morning. We all came to the morning meeting today. First thing I should move to here is the director, Tom Riley. We're pressing the law board in the Senate here in Oakdale Lake. And the next thing we can do is go around the table with our good sir, everybody.
Thank you, Doyle, for the scene.
I'm Mike Wilson, City Commissioner.
Ron Harrelson, Benson County Commissioner.
Chris Martin, City of Ellis Lake, and their rep, Mark Ellis, City Commissioner.
Neil Drew, County Commissioner.
Dave Robins, City of Ellis Lake, and Ellis County Commissioner.
Dick Johnson, City of Ellis Lake, Mayor.
Jamie Tennyson, Nelson County State District.
Bruce Eller, Nelson County Commissioner.
Don Fugner, Nelson County Commissioner.
Mayor Lawwell, Nelson County Commissioner.
Oh, Dale Floggen, Nelson County Commissioner, and Kevin Ince, Police Region 4.
Nancy Markford, Nelson County Commissioner, and Elise Gordon, Melissa's Commissioner.
Mark Olson, Nelson County Commissioner, and Elise, a board member.
Scott Bull, County Commissioner.
Michael Eisen, County Commissioner.
Gilbert, Nelson County Commissioner.
Mike Stafford, Benson County Commissioner, and Representative to the Ellis County.
Dave Elke, District 15 Senator. Dennis Gossen, District 15 Legislature.
Kurt Huster, District 15 Attorney.
Good morning and welcome, folks. I've been asked by Ed to just throw a few points out there, help us begin a discussion and engage in problem solving or find some solutions to some of the funding issues we're finding right now. I think a lot of this has been brought on in terms of the timing for this meeting by slowdown at the end of the year last year with our population and a particular slowdown in January and then February, especially with particularly low numbers for us. With that being said, just to throw out some ways that we might be able to reduce expenses, if we would look at reducing our shifts, for example, from what we currently have typically as sergeant and three COs, we can legally get away with going down to have sergeant and two COs. By doing that, for a whole, you know, all the time, which we can't afford to do until I'll explain later, you only save about 5.7 beds a day, or that's what it equals out to in terms of what you're going to, how you're going to impact your overall expenses. It'll be as if you had 5.7 more inmates in the jail as you do. Friday, Saturday nights are busy with a lot of comings and goings. That would not be a good time or a practical time to reduce staffing levels to that level. And same with on court days, Mondays and Tuesdays are very busy. It really also doesn't take into account a lot of the transports we do, both for ourselves and other jurisdictions, to and from court, to and from other facilities. So I'm just showing that even that reduction, which is the farthest we could go and still be in line with state standards and pre-standards, the impact is fairly minimal as far as reducing our jail staffing levels. Also, the reality for the COs, if it were to happen at the full level, it would affect each CO about $400 a paper. Every two weeks they'd see $400 less in their paycheck. So then you start to get into the cycle that the legal enforcement was in prior to my coming around, where there was so much turnover. You end up increasing the use of OT over time. You end up needing more training because of the turnover. You have to send everyone to CO Basic, and so there's actually more cost in that and a lot more burnout occurring there. So not long ago, there was a presentation, sorry, I started again, about the CAS County Jail Administrator to lay out why we shouldn't be staffed at the levels we are. That was when Steve Nelson was in charge of things at the jail, and I think he was right. And that's why we're at the levels we're at. And there's not a whole lot we can do to change our staffing levels to have a significant financial impact for us. Other ways, and I'm trying to throw out anything and everything, not, not, one thing will be, I don't think, liked by everyone necessarily, and some of them just don't base it real well, but all, when you look at it, but I'm trying to keep an open conversation and dialogue to consider everything, kind of no bad ideas, really. We're already doing what's happened, what's been stated there at the top. We came out of 2015 in the black and pretty healthy with the feds still owing us $50,000, $60,000 under reentry side, and that dates back to September, October, November of last year. Bureau of Prisons has been very balky at paying their bills, and we're working on that. But because we kept expenses at a reasonable level, we look at 91 as our number for a break-even point, and the actual average, and I think you all got handouts that shows that, was like 88.3 last year. So not too bad, and even though we're below what we think we need to be at to break even, we did better than break even and actually ended up in the last overall. The jail's budget is pretty closely paired with the reentry center's budget, just to point that out, and that one dispatch is separate, so I won't really be addressing that much, but there is some crossover between the jail and the reentry center. We have, we're in the very early stages of discussing, effective August of 2017, the reentry center will have to have four new staff essentially, meaning pre-standards, and that is that they have to have a staff person of each gender on staff for all shifts. Currently, their night shifts only have one individual on for a 12-hour period on their own. That's either a male or a female. So in order to comply with pre-standards, and it has to comply with it by next August of '17, they're going to have to hire four staff. So one idea we're looking at is whether or not jail staff could possibly fill some of those shifts, because they have, you know, they're working with the same people essentially, just in a secure setting versus the regular setting. That would be one way to reduce the impact of the fact that we have to add four positions to the reentry center next year. There'll also be other things we'll look at with the budget in 2017 to address that issue. You know, we have things like, you know, we realize our census is low, and the staff understand it, and the captain and myself and people are working our tails off to contact everyone and anyone that we think we might be able to draw some inmates from and hope for them. And the fact is, I just came from yesterday's jail administrators meeting statewide, and there's a few places that are still operating real full, but several other law enforcement centers or correction centers are currently experiencing a low census, where they haven't typically this time of year. So that's part of the reason why we're getting fewer referances. There's other places that are feeling the same reduction in inmates currently. I've already kind of explained, there's not a lot of extra bodies around, but the reason I was pointing out that we're aware of it, our aunt Sarah Brown, who's been with us for a long time, does a great job, and she offered basically to cut back on her hours just as long as she was able to work enough hours each week so she can continue getting her benefits. But I mean, she just voluntarily said, hey, I can, I can cut back eight hours a week or something like that, and probably a little savings to the agency, but that's the kind of attitude people are bringing to the table, and so we're all trying to contribute to the solutions here. As I say, when the census is low, that's really only when it's realistic. She just told me today she had hoped to not have to bring anyone to the doctor this month, and it's the third of the month, and she's already brought four people, so. There's one that, again, if you want to fix staff, I'm around negatively, but it has to at least, I think we put on the table, you can look at reducing the benefits you provide to your staff, part of which is healthcare. I think we have a very good and solid and realistic healthcare and overall benefit plan myself, and it's not just because I'm a employee getting benefit from it, naturally I do, but I know how it would affect a lot of our staff that are, that are living more tightly, week to week, month to month, with their budgets, and you just experience more turnover and reduce morale if you did something like that. But I'm trying to show you that I'm willing to, you know, we're willing to discuss anything. And it's kind of embarrassing to say, but we have no programs to cut, we have no programming in our jail other than, and there's many other jails that experience that same problem. I'll get to the reason why in just one moment, but it's, it's really sad. We have a couple of ministers, for example, or religious, maybe an AA sponsor that comes in and talks with our inmates. We have only emergency help from the Human Service Center when someone's suicidal or going through severe withdrawals or having major mental health or chemical dependency issues, they'll come over and see them, but it's a brief, a brief exchange, and there's no real service being delivered by the Human Service Center in our facility. Rob has similar problems with that when his folks are on inmate status. A huge part of this problem, which I think I've had some discussions with our legislators previously, and want to stress with them and want to get the message, and all of the jail administrators throughout the state have a unified voice on this, if you're on Medicare or Medicaid and you walk, you're arrested and placed in a jail, your healthcare coverage is suspended, which makes no sense to anyone who runs a jail, especially when we're currently, whether you like it or not, living in a situation where it's mandated that you have healthcare insurance. So just the fact that you walk in the door of jail, your Medicare, Medicaid cuts off, that's why we don't have any program, because there's no funding stream to provide the program, and we would become a real dumping ground for mental health matters, substance abuse, chronic substance abuse cases, and everyone's uniformly up in arms about that in terms of wanting to talk to the state about why can't we do something about that? And that could go a long way to helping us out with a number of things. Hopefully you're using your handy dandy handouts here and then jot down questions, because I appreciate that, I can't have to take much longer. If you have questions, please make note of things so that you can ask your questions afterwards, because I'm going to turn it over to Ed and the rest of you, and we'll be available to answer questions. So where are, where are ways that we can bring in more revenue? Well, currently, we don't try, and this is typical practice for other correction centers, but I just want everyone to understand some of the details of how we operate. We charge for the first day you're in and all the days subsequent to that. We do not charge for your last day, the day you're going out, people don't get charged for it. Also, if someone comes in and out on the same day, there's a partial day fee that they pay, and it's half of our $70 per diem, just so that you know that. So when I looked at some numbers and looked at what additional revenue could be brought in if we increase what our member counties are currently paying per diem, which nobody wants to hear, nobody wants to have to do, and nor do I, but we need to at least look at what that does for us in terms of revenue. But it's pretty straightforward right there, what happens if you're averaging 50 inmates and you raise it 250 per diem, that's what you see in a year. If you're averaging 75, which I think is actually much more realistic, even though we're down right now, it is what it is. You go up to 75, you see what you do for your revenues. Turnkey correction services, which our staff person, Emily Jager, is responsible for, offers more services than we currently utilize it for. It's a way for inmates to get money deposited in their accounts so that they can purchase items from the vending machine in the jail, so they can put time on a phone card that they can use from the jail. They offer many other services, including video visitation, emails, texting, there's a number of other services, and they've made a proposal to us for giving us additional kiosks. We currently only have two, we have one in the hallway and one in our male rep room area. The proposal, we could add kiosks and we could add some of the services we're using. This is a revenue enhancement. It doesn't cost you anything when you utilize more services with turnkey. However, I think I was told it's about $10,000, was that an annual figure, a year? Annual, about, we get about $10,000 in revenue by the way we currently use turnkey. And so, you know, maybe we could double that, maybe not. Is that inaccurate?
That's about right.
That's about double.
Again, it's kind of a small way to compare to what we're doing, but again, putting everything on the table. We had reduced contractual agreement for rent with, for example, the sheriff's department, the police department, BCI, anyone that's paying rent. We had reduced that back when, overall, the financial health of the agency was still very, very strong, particularly back when we were still getting up a major stream of federal revenue from us, particularly the juvenile program. We just this year, in our current budget, returned to the contracted levels of rent that those agencies paid to be in our building. I believe that the levels we increased them back to that we have had under contract, that's still lower than what the standard rent is, if you look throughout the community, for what different organizations paid for rent in similar facilities. So we could look at increasing rent. Again, just something we would put out. Soon, the BCI and the narcotics task force are going to be moving to a new location. Police Department is going to take up, they've asked to take up most of what would be vacated by that change and that move, but also we're going to pick up just a little bit of space. Frankly, we just need storage, unlimited amount of storage space. We're going to pick up a vault, basically, and I think one, maybe one office room or one closet, basically. And so the rent issue is explained there briefly. You know, are there ways, knowing the current atmosphere at the state where budget cuts happen, we've already seen that with our contract with the DOCR, that recently came through after July 1st, rather than getting the increase that we were contracted for for 2016, '17 fiscal year, we're going to get, or it's going to stay above the same, I can't remember if there's a small bump, but it's about a buck fifty less than what we would have been getting for the second year of the contract. But are there any state funds that could be directed our way? Is there any legislative action, for example, with that Medicare/Medicaid question that could be quite substantial for not only us but all jails throughout the state? And then there's really a pretty hot button issue. We might get some other information about this from our legislators, who may have something to add, that once we begin our discussion, but I've twice invited Steve, Steve Agnew, talked through him and indicated that we'd be willing to take our regional folks, folks from our five county areas, City of Ellis Lake, for example, they beat district court cases, so the five counties. Say, when an inmate at the DOCR is a year or less from return to the community or their release date, it's actually supportive through evidence-based practices that they be closer to their home community, that they be closer to their family, that they be closer to where they're going to be seeking employment, that kind of thing, and that they could, and we would like them to, send us some or a significant number of those inmates in the DOCR that will be coming back to us anyways in one way, shape, or form earlier on so that they can begin that reintegration process in the community. Steve liked the idea, he ran it up to his boss and she said, no, not this time. Another thing that's going on with DOC inmates, I know you've paid attention, you've heard them complaining a lot about how overcrowded they are. They, Rugby did have 20 DOCR inmates recently for several months, and as soon as the news of these budget cuts came out, DOCR came, scooped them up, and took them from Rugby and took them back, and my understanding, some help with Rob and emails he's exchanged with folks, they are, they've purchased or not, they're leasing four of the man camp buildings, the Mount West, they're bringing them in and leasing them at $70,000, is that what it was?
Seven hundred thousand a year.
Seven hundred thousand a year per bill per. Yeah, so I think there's a question that, you know, I have for the DSA, I'm sure, in terms of crying wolf so much about how full they are and making themselves more full when we're offering a release valve for them. I do not understand that, and perhaps there is more of an explanation. Steve isn't here to defend himself, and he's always been really good to work with, so I don't want to go too overboard with that, but there's something going on there. I'm not aware of any, oh, city sales tax, I should mention. The only reason that's why that's stated is because my understanding is that's the only entity that's part of this joint powers that has the authority legally to tax anything or to increase or change any taxes. So I don't single out the cities for any reason other than the fact that they have that authority legally currently, and I can be corrected on that, or it can be explained other avenues we could take on that, but that's my current understanding. I, like I said, I'm not aware of any federal funding we can look at beyond what we get when we contract with the federal marshals, Bureau of Prisons, USPO, when we actually house their inmates, but for example, there's a grant that Rob and I have looked at that could possibly help us improve our services and around on the health and substance abuse with the Human Services Center, but as I understand it, starting at 10 o'clock this morning, there was a meeting at the Capitol, DHS stakeholders, where they're doing a total restructuring of the DHS, and then into two parts, one being policy, one being services, and ahead of each of those two departments, it's going to be a major change for them, and that's going to take some time in an already very bureaucratic and red tape heavy system, which I'm familiar with through my years with Benson County. We're looking at expansion of our reentry program. The reason we are is because that's the trend of services and managing residents and inmates at all levels, federally, statewide, even locally, our judges are looking at our reentry center as a sentencing option for local sentences rather than jail or prison, and so we're taking that under consideration. In fact, that's why initially Rob had reached out to ask about these man camp buildings and whether they might be a reasonable initial step for us to, for example, lease one or purchase one to use to expand our reentry center, because they keep a pretty good, let's say 80, 90% full census all the time, it's very consistent. They have much more control of their census, they have people on their waiting list and things like that, whereas we have no control at all over our front door. It's up to who's getting arrested. We can put the vacancy light on bright and shine it and tell everybody we've got room, but if they don't extend those people, we don't got the bodies and we don't have the inmate count. This is my opinion, and perhaps mine only, but I wonder if our funding streams don't need to be more consistent and stable so that we can be less dependent on our daily inmate count, which we have no control of, which I just explained. For example, does a mill, each, each of the member counties contributes a mill and the city, I believe as well, does today's mill, has that kept up with the expenses of running our jail and holding a single inmate? Peggy was just telling me before we started that she's determined through recent calculations that cost of housing a single inmate based on taking everything into consideration, although it's not finalized yet, is just shy of $70, where it used to be under 60 the last time that was discussed publicly and it was in the board itself and figured into the budget. So if our daily inmate cost is just literally maybe a dollar under 70 average, and we're charging our member counties $70, you can see how tight that margin is, and that's just, that's the reality of what it costs us to house an inmate each day. There's a lot of needs looking into the future. The physical plant will continue to have issues around deterioration and equipment needing to be replaced. We're almost near completion, trying to getting our roof completely replaced, which was, which was very much overdue and need, and we've got some ceilings that are a safety and security nightmare within our rep room area, our women's rep area, and one of our sex cells that are just drop-down ceilings that are just an eyesore and are terribly risky for safety and security issues. We're getting a security ceiling put in next, no, this month, mid to late March. The materials are ordered, they should be in on March 15th, and we have an installation crew ready to come in and do that. So those are some capital improvements we've had to do since I started, in my opinion, and the board supported that, I agree, but you can expect more of that in the future. And I just end with the fact we have no programming in our jail. We're not at all contributing in any meaningful way to reducing recidivism after somebody walks out of our facility. Holding someone in a jail or putting them in a jail doesn't, not only does that not drop their risk to recidivate, but simply being put in a secure environment increases your risk to reoffend criminally. And that's just a fact based on tons of research. So I think it's all battling I need to do today, and I appreciate your time for listening to that. I'm going to open it up to all of the board members and members and council members to discuss it and ask any questions, we have some staff here that are available to help answer questions as they can, and we want to keep you with the current and moving forward, looking ahead.
What else, Logan, from Nelson County, I killed in a car accident, or member of the summer, and they answered a couple of the hour. I have a couple of questions. We had overtime problems, and did you hire somebody to kind of cut that back?
We greatly reduced our overtime. We significantly reduced our overtime. The area that we most struggle right now with overtime is the nine-month dispatch, where we're currently two staff down there, and then Star has to step in and help out a lot with that, but even though that's our worst area for overtime, that would probably be our healthiest overall program within the three that I'm responsible for. So we have, in reentry center and the jail, we've almost eliminated overtime in the jail and greatly reduced the rate.
Same with that time, you're resolving the problem this summer, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you can't run a 20-hour, four-hour, seven-program, and these are three of them, without some occasional overtime. You have people that take vacations, you have people that get sick, you have people that have to go away to trainings, and so when you're staffing at a level that's pretty tight already for what your minimum requirements are based on federal pre-laws and state DOCR laws or code, you're going to experience some overtime. So the elimination of overtime is not a realistic thing, but we've greatly reduced our overtime. Our board gets monthly reports about that, and they can ask anytime they want, as they want.
Another question you can kind of answer, you still working with Steve Inge in our district?
Yes, yep, yep.
Because I think you got a lot to answer.
Throw it in there too, just for what it's worth, I just learned something new here just this morning that should be interesting, but we are having three inspectors from the National Institute of Corrections coming in mid-April. I asked for that last year around May or June, and it's taken this long for them to get everything all in place, but they're sending three inspectors to spend a couple, two, three days here. They're going to do a full operational assessment of our facility, something we requested, there's no charge to us whatsoever, and then they'll do a full report. there's no charge to us whatsoever, and then they'll do a full report back to us about insufficiencies, strengths, areas that we need to make changes on. So we invite that kind of feedback and criticism, and we're doing it actively at the highest level possible with the NIC.
Okay, one more. You did discuss this too, and now we've discussed earlier, is the vault ceiling, which really has to be put in his chasers. Are you getting at that now?
We are getting at that now. I hope to, apart that by mid, I hope that before the inspectors show up, that those new ceilings, I don't really want them to see the light of day.
Well, it's major, they're probably fine, so.
They're coming second, second week in April, April thirteen, fourteen. It's Wednesday, Thursday, I believe, mid.
Question for the legislators, the numbers you just said are an aggregate, where they're bringing in four man camps at seven hundred thousand, these is two point eight million. At that rate, they could chip out a hundred prisoners to somebody for the entire year and still be underneath that number. So I'm curious, why did she turn this down?
Yes, as I understand it, they only put thirty in each of those buildings too, so that's a great question.
I mean, maybe you don't have any background with that, so it's a tough question for you, but at the same time, I mean, we're talking about money and we're talking about helping each other out. Can't imagine why she wouldn't look at this more seriously and say, "That makes sense." I mean, if I figured it right, that's a hundred thirty prisoners, and they could chip out and be less money than bringing in these so-called man camps.
State prisons have just looked out at that idea since the first year.
It's not a good idea.
I was sure, but I didn't know all the particulars on how much it was going to cost them to rent the building at seven hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, that's why we made direct the law enforcement center more than the last meeting to have Rob look into it. Maybe we should rent something like this instead of, you know, get through reentry. Well, at seven hundred thousand dollars, that's going to go a long way, so I guess that idea's off the door.
I mean, I would just never guess, I'm just curious, what did she answer to? I mean, is she like the definite, definitive?
It's Leah Birch that we're talking about, and I can't make a better.
I don't know.
My thoughts are, I guess I won't be able to.
I see.
I understand that, but that's still probably a year away. What can we do in the meantime? Is there answers for you guys as to, do you look into it? What do you look into it? It just doesn't make sense monetarily.
I was going to go to the legislature's, that's why I got you to, you know, like, oh, that, maybe.
Yeah, we have to do, before I get into that part of it, I can tell you that relative to Medicare, Medicaid, and Ron, Ron, Al, hopefully you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but those are federal programs that are administered by the state of North Dakota, and so the law is relative to coverage, insurance coverage, when you become a prisoner. You know, I think it's forty-eight hours after you become a prisoner, you don't have those benefits anymore. Is that close to being accurate, Ron?
That's close. States make their own plan, it's called a Medicaid state plan, and that's written into our plan. Now, what the feds will allow and what we have written into our plan, I have not researched that. That's a really, really good question. I was thinking about that when Tom brought that up. For instance, we currently choose some parts of the federal plan to cover addiction. Certainly other states cover more addiction with their Medicaid than we do, Minnesota being one. And I know Representative Costa and I have had conversations about this, especially the addiction part. We didn't write that into our state plan because it costs more money. I don't, and maybe, Tom, do you know, is that not written into our state plan in other states? What does Minnesota, Montana, other states do with that? I guess I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that right now either, but I believe that there is more autonomy within our state's ability to make some of those decisions than people might think. I want to look at more closely the federal mandate, what, how much do, how tight do they expect the operator? But because they gave each state the autonomy to either buy into it or not to, and how to implement it, I believe there is some room there probably to look at, or making some changes at the state level that could help. Those are some questions I need to learn more about.
Certainly, I think there's room under the Medicaid plan to tweak those programs. Medicare, I think, is very much a federal, federal program, and I don't know that we have any room at all there. Medicaid, you know, we do have some latitude with different programs under Medicaid. You know, we can certainly ask those questions, those are, those are difficult bars to move, I'll tell you that. Once we start, once we start looking at those things, you know, the addiction issue that Ron has talked about, we've talked about that a number of times in the state, very difficult bars to move, but we can, we can certainly have a conversation, that's a legislative issue, so we can afford that issue. I will tell you, they are, they are very difficult bars to move.
Representative Johnson and I did meet with Director Leah Birch yesterday, knew we happened to be in Vismar for a tribal and state relations interim committee, and I asked if we could have lunch with her, and we did. Donovan Vaudy happened to be there as well, and so we had a pretty interesting and frank discussion. She did share with us that relative to the Medicare issue, there's one state that has found a way to access some of those dollars, and that's Vermont. And they, they did something with their, with their, and I do not know for sure if it's their statewide corrections, but it may be limited, but they, they created an entity they call an alternative hospital rather than a prison. So that way, they're able to, you know, for some of these clients that you end up having, they're able to access Medicare benefits for them. The three of us will be looking deeply into that, so you can keep that on your radar. I have to tell a little story now to, these guys hate it when I tell stories, and I'm really sorry to belabor this, but my very, I got to stand up to tell this story. My very first session, I was in the hallway, and a new guy, and a lobbyist came up to me and introduced himself, and he shook hands, and we visited for a bit, and he told me a little bit about himself, and seemed like a great guy. I walked away, and one of the other senators happened to, you know, step into my path, and he said, "You still got all your fingers?" I said, "No." "Is this somebody I got to watch out for?" "I don't know, just saying." That's been a trust issue for me ever since that moment. That lobbyist is still around. And to this day, whenever he gets, he's never given me anything other than the true facts, but I always double check and question everything. And what's happened to the law enforcement center is you have trust issues, particularly with the feds. The federal prisoner that was able to walk out, if you, if you understand the prison system and federal marshals, that prisoner was a responsibility of that federal marshal. So they don't blame the law enforcement center that that happened, blame falls on that federal marshal. So now you have trust issues with the feds. They don't want to put federal prisoners in the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center because they don't trust them. Now, I was overjoyed, and I know Dennis in Kirkwood too, because the first thing that Leah handed me yesterday was a copy of the security audit report. And she said, "Until Lake Region Law Enforcement Center goes through a new security audit, no one's going to trust you. It just isn't going to happen. You need to do this and step up to the plate and make whatever changes are necessary." Now, she said, "We do it at the state level, but it costs you one to fifteen to twenty grand. If the feds do it," which here is happening now quickly, NIC is apparently coming in next month, "then it's free." But what do you say, a year and a half? That's probably, you know, and fortunately, you're ahead of the game. So, you know, the state can do it right away, but, you know, the feds are already going to be here, they're handling that rate. We did, she gave me a copy, us a copy of the security audit that was done for Part of America, I think, not too long ago, when they were having some of their issues. And I, I think Petty was kind enough to make copies for your board members. So it gives you an idea of what that security audit entails, the kind of recommendations they come with, come back with, and that gives you a starting, wants to start building trust again, so that you're going to be able to give some of those prisoners that you dearly desire to have. I have a feeling that the DOCR probably doesn't have a lot of trust in you really right now. But they're not saying that to you. I never went back to this lobbyist and said, "Jeez, you know, nobody trusts you," or at least I don't, how come that is? That just doesn't work that way. We all know people we don't trust, and you don't go up to them and tell them that, because you don't trust them, until you get that trust back through doing things like you need to do. So that's an issue. Donovan pointed out, pre-trial services, I can save the county money. It doesn't help how a lot for the law enforcement center, you know, to put a prisoner on the GPS and let him be at home with the GPS bracelet on it, it only costs the county four or five bucks a day to do that. But the law enforcement center goes, "Well, shit, our cash flow, we need that seventy bucks a day," you know? So you have that balance that's different here than it is in most places. You know, wouldn't you say that's true? You know, most counties have their own jail, and they pony up whatever they have to pony up to make it run. And if they can save a few bucks by putting somebody on a GPS bracelet or a scrap bracelet, they will do that. But now you have a law enforcement center board who goes, "Yeah, but we need the guy in jail at seventy bucks a day or seventy-five or whatever it is." You know, you, you need to kind of grips with that and help, you know, help each other figure out, is this, you know, is the LEC supposed to make money? Or is it supposed to manage, and the counties that are participating is supposed to support it, and tax dollars support it too? Those, the, we have juvenile programs? Yeah, you don't have the ability to do a juvenile program right now, because you don't have people to train or to, you know, provide the services that are necessary, for social services, to educational services. But could that happen again? It probably could happen again, but I think that audit is the most critical thing that's happening at the time. I mean, that, that's pretty exciting. I'll sit down and shut up and let Dennis share, if he remembers anything else from our meeting, if it was only an hour. But, you know, she did mention Steve Inge being the facilities administrator for the state of North Dakota. I'm sure he's going to be excited to know that NIC is doing that audit as well.
Yes, just to let, you know, he is where he's been great to work with. DOCR isn't sending any of their inmates to any jail. So I think we've worked pretty closely with Steve to maintain a level of trust. I'm not saying there aren't issues because of that escape. And the US Marshals could have pulled all their inmates. We have less now than we did a year ago, but we still, they're still housing US Marshal inmates and BOP inmates, fewer of those even, but that's all, that number's already more with us. So yes, we want to reestablish and build on any trust that does remain, and we'll do whatever it takes to do that.
So how long after the audit, did you say that it takes before you can start sending?
Well, you have to comply with the audit request.
I understand that.
So, yeah, I mean, that is, it really did sound to us like that made the world of difference to go through that audit and comply with the requirements that are in the audit.
So once you comply?
Yeah.
Is there a time period, or you heard the time period or something?
We didn't, we didn't, us always at the same meeting, so it'd be repeat what Dave said here, but that's what I can wait for the meeting to do, is the importance of the audit to show that you are secure for the US Marshals. The US Marshals are taking prisoners in South Dakota, Iowa, they're taking them to secure facilities. If we had an audit going, we could do it at the end while they did that market, if they did the houses, folks, and I'm sure you had the same conversation, that's what we're going to be.
I would have to note the irony of Robby just recently passed in security audit successfully, and the DOCR coming in and taking all their inmates from them. So I'm not sure which side of the mountain that's coming out of the commission, but that doesn't match what was really going on.
Yeah, just a comment, the amount, the amount of money we generated for the marshal service was a couple hundred thousand dollars or more last year than we had before. So I don't, I'm unaware of this lack of trust as it applies to marshal prisoners coming into our facility. In fact, the number's got to be up, don't they?
Their numbers are not up right now, but we still have US Marshal inmates. And we went through a very extensive process of deconstructing what happened with regards to that escape, and worked very closely with several members of the marshal's office, up to and including the chief of the US Marshal Service in North Dakota. And they were, you know, they made very clear that they were satisfied with the changes we made as a result of that, and that they've been keeping a very close eye, that we continue to manage our security issues in a way that they expect us to. So I agree, but sometimes people aren't going to tell you face if it's a trust issue, but you can base, based on their actions. And with the marshals, they've continued to send us people, we still have people. And with the state, they're not sending anyone anywhere. There's all kinds of places that have passed security audits, and DOCR is not sending anyone to anyone. So I don't think that fits with, I think it was kind of a error to throw off, frankly.
Right, it doesn't support the act. We're making, we've made five hundred thousand dollars off of US Marshal prisoners last year, four hundred and eighty thousand, the year before, only three hundred and forty thousand. So we're getting the revenue from the marshal services, they might be telling you that there's a lack of trust that they're sending us prisoners. Maybe they're going to send a little more after that's not, I don't know.
True.
But that business has been good, and the state's good.
Yep.
Yeah.
For Dennis and Dave, in the SCRAM program, and these, I'm used to working with Dave works the same way, is that the facility, you have fifty dollars to put these folks up. And then after that, all the money that was collected went to the state. And Rob was that, and you have a lot of money on SCRAM, huh?
Thirty-seven.
So these guys have to monitor them. They get the phone calls and some is not complying, but the money is going all to the state. There is a big disconnect there, that money should be at least a portion of that five dollars a day, I think that's how they pay, that's what they do anymore. That five dollars a day should be saved as a halfway house against the work. They go look them up, and if they have to drive all twenty-five miles, thirty miles, hook some money up, and you get the fifty bucks a day.
We start going up there now, we make them come to the office, huh?
But in any event, they get the fifty dollars, hook them up, go to the paperwork, hook them up, but then they have the monitor, and that's where the work's at. The workers in the monitor, they get nothing, absolutely nothing to do that.
That's all administered through the Attorney General Office.
They pay them. But that's something that needs to be built in.
We've talked about that before.
And that, that five bucks, was that supposed to come from the bank? And all that stuff, the bank did?
Yeah.
I don't know. Most of them pay themselves.
We have it set up with our judges here, our three for Vaudy, for Stofferson, where if they don't pay, then we bill the county, the county comes to go to the court, they add it, the court fines the fees, then they just collect it forward, so that we're not eating that bill. But there's just no money coming to us for administrative work.
And that's where all the work's at, is the monitoring. Someone's not complying, they get the phone calls and those.
Well, the idea of it in the first place, it would be more going out to housing, you know, at seventy bucks a day. I mean, that was, that was the initial thought on that, but that, you know, we can work with the A.D.'s office and A.D.'s machines. The other, the other bracelet that Judge Vaudy mentioned is GPS bracelet, I think that's, I don't think you do, you had to do a lot of work on that.
That's, it's not quite as bad, it's, it's, is it something I can access anytime, anywhere? It's more retracting than anything? It's more for tracking than anything?
It's like a sex offender, so you know if they went by the school or something like that.
Right, right.
The SCRAM bracelets are usually alcohol or violations where they have to maintain a date.
But it is still the vanity centered responsibility to track and manage and maintain the GPS if someone's hooked up on it. So it is less active because folk on SCRAM tend more often to violate the SCRAM bracelet. But it remains a function of the, it's right, the labor involved with such a device is on our shoulders.
It takes me approximately eight hours only just to receive the funds that go through on GPS, on electronic monitoring, just to receive the funds.
So that goes to the overhead, the administrative overhead, but also as a part of SCRAM or GPS bracelets? We pay for it because of hours it takes up to pay? Could you say that again? I missed those numbers.
It's possibly eight hours a week that it takes me just to write the receipts for SCRAM and GPS. The funds that are coming through the halfway house, coming into the administration, I have to re-receive all those funds. That's how long it takes me every week. I go through two hundred slip receipt books a month on just SCRAM and GPS. It takes a lot of time to administer the SCRAM and GPS portions up from our position.
And Rob, you said there's thirty-seven on it right now?
Right now, yeah, I have thirty-seven on SCRAM.
And that's a lot of labor work for thirty-seven people in the facilities. But either income tax or that, huh?
Going back, Dave, you did bring it up. And I think the Juvenile Detention Center, which we've talked about for a long time, I think there's money to be made there, and I think the route is going to have to go forward and get a building and start to do now the center and double slate. We're going to Grand Forks and Scottsdale. And I know where you guys go, Devil's Lake, Grand Forks, mine.
Devil's Lake goes to Grand Forks, Ramsey County goes to Grand Forks, Benson goes to Grand Forks. I just found out yesterday that for the entire year of 2015, Ramsey County had twenty-two individual juveniles that went to Grand Forks. The average length of stay for folks at the Grand Forks Detention Facility is right around or a little less than a week. I would never argue that there is not a need for a regional juvenile detention center of some kind, and that Devil's Lake is a logical place for it. From a strictly financial perspective and logistical perspective, because of the new requirements under FRIA in terms of capacity, we can separate juveniles from adults and men from women and boys from girls, a juvenile center will, is not a realistic possibility at our current facility. We've talked very directly about that as a board and with other law enforcement representatives. That's not why they have. I would love to see the political and emotional will, if you will, from at the city, county, state level to build a juvenile facility. However, you need to know that that would be a massive financial undertaking, not only because of the facility itself, but the requirements now for the staffing levels you have to have for a juvenile facility, as was mentioned, education has to be provided. You have the school districts supposed to pick up those costs, but you have to provide education. You have to have a case manager that's a social worker type of position. You have to have a mental health position, possibly a mixed mental health and substance abuse position. Also, the ratio of staff to inmates or residents when you talk about juveniles is far greater or smaller, however, what you want to look at. For example, adults, maybe you have to have one staff for, let's say, twenty-two or twenty-five inmates. For juveniles, it's more like one to eight. So I've always been a component of the concept of the juvenile detention facility being in Devil's Lake or certainly within the region. But I need to be real honest, and I invite you to ask anywhere around, financially, that's a huge one to undertake. And it would require the joint energies and political will of government at all levels to pull that off.
What would be in Grand Forks?
Probably two and a quarter. Just went, just had a big boost as of January first. Around one fifty to two fifty.
Seventy-eight dollars.
It's the first, it's the first big rating they've done in, I don't know how many, many years. And they went from one hundred fifty a day to two fifty a day. So that's the kind of thing you'd be looking at charging, if not more, per day for juvenile facility here. And it's just, it's a real big, it's a real big thing.
How many would you have to build, more than eight or ten at one time, or is that big enough?
That, that might, that might very well be, I mean, considering we had, what did I say? Twenty-two from Ramsey County alone go to Grand Forks. Benson, I think, had five all year last year. Five-seven, Steve can correct me, but I have the number written down on another paper. So, yeah, that is us because of the transportation. And that's the thing, the transportation for the various sheriff departments and stuff is difficult. It also removes the youth from their family and their support system when they have to go to Grand Forks. But it should be noted, they're not there very long. And the numbers are small enough where it's pretty hard to argue that we would have enough. You have to staff, this is the same problem I have with jail, right? You have to staff a juvenile facility to be prepared to be at that, whatever level you have, sixty, eight, ten, best. You have to staff it for all that. We have to staff our facility to hold one hundred and eight inmates. That's where we're passing. When we're sitting on the bar today at just under sixty, that's not a good thing. But we still have to have the same staff on staff and pay them and pay their benefits. And we have to be ready and fully equipped to be at ninety in three days. Should there be a big sleep or should there be some, so, um, there's just a lot of, I don't want to just put up there as a total, talking negative about the juvenile, but it's a big cost issue though. And everybody needs to be very open eyed about that and very realistic about it. And I do invite you, that's why Grand Forks had to go from one fifty to two fifty.
I think we got it on the meeting yesterday, dude, with Sherman, Sheriff's, the regulations and stuff, and you ought to staff the D. You cannot build a facility to make, like, provide service and figure out what I paid for.
But you kept sharing the staff, remember? Our jail staff couldn't also be detention staff or shared back and forth with them.
I have two things up. And I'm just doing the course, I should know maybe, I just can't draw it off my head. Currently, we subsidize a nine-one-one and a couple of dispatchers through the LLC. They'll visit two or four.
Four.
Four. So one way, you know, nine-one-one gets up and goes a little better than they once you get some of these big bills. But we have to get the ship and sell that bird back to nine-one-one as far as the salary.
That would be, that would be true.
There's some potential there.
You can't, you can't do that because
Can't do that.
One person has to leave for nine-one-one all the time. Because our dispatchers also are.
No, I'm just talking salaries, just.
I understand, I understand.
The nine-one-one dollar is very specific as to what I'm paying for. So we can't, we can't pay somebody to hold the jail open. We can't pay somebody to dispatch and initiate.
I'm going the other way though, taking the LECs, because right now we're subsidizing nine-one-one a little bit out of the LEC brackets. Do we not have to have eight dispatchers total?
We have to have two dispatchers on every ship, yes.
Okay, and that's equal to, okay.
Eight.
Eight, okay. So right now, we're paying four of those salaries out of nine-one-one, four of them out of LEC. So my thought process was, we paid six of them out of LEC, or nine-one-one funding LEC. But you can't, but I can't understand that.
Because the second person on the ship has to be paid by the LEC to open doors. And a person has to be paid for actually nine-one-one calls. One person has to be paid to open doors.
Yeah, it has to do with their tie-in with responsibility of all the security functions within the jail for opening and closing doors, allowing the food service to come and go every day. Folks in dispatch have that responsibility for a lot of the functions within the jail, so.
And I guess I don't understand if those, if those might as well shifting some of the burden of bills, because nine-one-one, if they're paying all the.
You write down what works and not, right?
No, but that's all right, we can discuss that. But that, that would be, that would be fair.
Because the nine-one-one dollars have to be dedicated strictly to nine-one-one services. The staff in there spend half their time, I would do staff, opening and allowing entrance through doors. And that could be inmates coming in going, food service could be professionals, jail staff, it's me every day going in and out. So I can't just push a button and lock through a door. But nine-one-one dispatch staff has to do that function.
So let me back it up then. Nine-one-one needs eight dispatchers to be fully staffed, correct? Would that be correct, Dave?
I have a best thing for you to do to get together at this time of year, Dave. I understand how they're doing it, I think the rest of us have. I think the short answer to that is yes, Bill, but we're not going to like the added to, we need to run our facility.
Okay, then we'll, we'll back up. Then just to show the urgency of where we are for boarding. I mean, look at that last year, it was the, something, whatever, what's in January, what were you at for boarding?
Average for January was like eighty-one, and February's going to be about seventy-five.
So you know, that number.
January was eighty-three.
Eighty-three January.
February was sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Yeah, so go with that, as I was saying, Friday, we hit sixty-five.
And we're under sixty right now.
Yeah, correct.
That number could be a little deceptive too, because you. That's why we're having a meeting there.
Come and go.
That's why we want to get ahead of the game. Let's give some nannies before we get to the next one.
I'm just trying to avoid the urgency here. And that's what I've been saying, I'm sure it's a bit urgent here.
There is, yes.
So that's what I'm trying to make.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
One thing I neglected was our Ramsey County State Attorney who announced himself, and he is running for district judge this fall, so I'm sure he's wanted to be recognized as Ramsey County's State Attorney, so thank you for coming on. Another thing, in Ramsey County, we started a tending care program, and we have our late social chairman or director in charge of that. And I'd like to have Rhonda give us a little update on all that's going on and a little bit about it. I think the other counties would like to know something about this. I've mentioned that we had LEC meetings and I did have all the facts, but I'm sure you do. So Rhonda, if you could do that, please. I welcome that, but let me quickly respond to the urgency issue. I am near completing a contract, which I actually sent last year, they just didn't respond to. Burley County, Burley County's farming people, the South Dakota, the Grand Forks, all over the place. We don't have a contract with them currently. I sent them home last year and it didn't get executed. And I only assumed that they didn't need it, but I created it and I sent it to them. Well, they're going to still be needing to send people out well into next spring. They asked me to send them a contract. Yesterday, the director asked me to send them a contract, same with Morton County. So I will be, since I've started, I've added Ward County, Williams County that we contract with, and now we'll be adding Burley and Morton as well. So we hope to get some immediate help from those counties and are very clearly and strongly aware of the urgency of the matter.
Before we switch subjects to, Dave, I don't give up very easily, so I just want you to, from what you said that she told you, from what Tom just told us, it doesn't match up. Can we get a definite answer as far as you're saying they're not shipping it because of the trust issue? Tom's telling us they're not shipping them anywhere. So that doesn't match up, so I think we need an answer.
When did Burley County contact you yesterday?
We talked at a meeting yesterday. I called them two or three days ago because Steve Nelson's out at a conference, and he was talking to Burley County Sheriff, they call him Reno or whatever, they call whoever they are. And he said that someone at Ward County told them to not send people out because they were using us and they wanted to keep using us, that's Ward County, I think it was. And, you know, things like that get lost in translation. So somehow they had an essence that, you know, we wouldn't be able to handle the people because of, we were too busy handling someone else. So that's been cleared up, and then both Burley and Morton aren't interested in sending us, positioning them. Nobody else, nobody else in the state is showing any trust issues with that, Rob, see that?
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to jump away from your question, but I, I think the best thing we can do is try and find out an answer for you.
Hey, that's all I'm asking.
Oh, I can repeat the question myself, but I'm sitting here wondering, you know, this could be, because yesterday is the clear goal, so.
But it doesn't match up.
Is that something, why not?
That was a bomb. I'm glad we're having an open dialogue, so now we can say how, how married we get to face to face on a order that you took.
I think I was on purpose, I must be here, Dave, to hear what's going on and sort of know what to talk about. I went to, I called, here's coming, I'll be yesterday, there's a person out there, they asked like, I'm getting this possible because it could be landmassing. I thought they said state person, they're going to go. They're even, they're even a bunch of people in there.
Yeah, they are, yeah, that's a couple. Yeah, that's actually BIA, they're, they're.
Yeah, we had a call to say what the law.
She said the law has been called.
They're a little, last night, they, they just recently signed another BIA term off because of Trump, you're right. There's another jail over in Davis, for the last, it was first thing that seemed because of the raid they had out there.
And is the state already paying this seven hundred dollars a day for mat camps? Is that going right now?
I haven't been there and seen them, and I haven't had a chance to ask anyone. Although I will ask you about that. Let's see what, let's see what Rob's got to say.
They have, we're not using them yet, they're still in the process of getting them set up, but it sounded like they had them on site.
And I talked to them yesterday, they're crucial to me, they're on there. Yeah, they told me to get lots of military training about it.
Yeah.
Something isn't, something don't scale.
That's right, that's exactly right. And we have, Rhonda, let's hear about that attending care. I think the rest of the counties in the city would be very interested in hearing what's up.
Thank you. Attending care is up and running as of March first, we have it in any business. It's an alternative to jail, there's federal funding that's run through the National Association of Counties. Our county commission put money into the budget, so we got more time for our coordinator. If you're, if anyone's interested or you know anyone, we're going to need volunteers that are paid eleven dollars an hour for their time to sit with juveniles. As Tom mentioned before, we know that once kids, we don't want kids in jails. And there's a, sheriffs are pushed by federal guidelines, not sheriffs and police departments not to put children in jail, so it's an alternative to jail. Social service agencies are also going to use it as a holding place for assessment. So we have an assessment tool that we're using. We also, another exciting thing that has happened through some money that came through Endaco is a restorative justice program, early diversion, that we're going to be piloting through the middle school to kind of get at those kids. There's a lot of, for lack of a red word, bullying and physical occupation to take place where we think we can make an impact with some early intervention restorative justice. So we're pretty excited, so we're ready to go. We have limited staff, so Sidney Holverson is the coordinator. She's actually supervised by the Sheriff's Department here, Steve Nelson, and he's not here today because he's at a conference. But we're pretty excited, it's at the North Dakota School for the Deaf. We have two rooms, there's a bathroom, it's set up very, very nice. So we're excited about that because we have not had attending care for a while. We were at the Double Wide Modular Home Place for a while, that didn't meet standards, there was no shower. So now we have showers, so we're excited. And I guess that's about all I have to say. If there's any questions about that, you can call me or Steve Nelson. I know the police department will be using it, so hopefully we're going to be able to catch some data also, because we just don't know, we don't have data, because we don't have anywhere to put kids that are out of control. We had, actually, I don't know if it's a whole, but had districts been taught.
What age group are we targeting, Rob?
Well, anywhere from eight to eighteen as an alternative to jail. The smaller kids, of course, would be more of an assessment place, a holding place for kids that are out of control, well, they have untreated, mental health issues, and there's just not a good place for them, and parents are unable to care for them.
This could be something that may be utilized for, say you got to go to license and see a kid for mat class tomorrow. say you gotta go to licenseee and get a kid for mat class tomorrow, or they, they'd be back that day before and sit there?
Yes.
How about if you pick up a juvenile after whatever reason, it's a jailable offense, instead of going to Grand Forest, you take them there at three, four o'clock in the morning and then regroup transportation the next day?
If, if he's appropriate, if he or she is appropriate, meaning they're not combative, they're not gonna, you're sure they're not gonna run, if they're, especially thinking that would be your call if they're delinquent, if you're not wanting them to run. That would be some of the issues, because it, you know, they are free to walk out, not, there's, it's not a locked facility, they would be free to, to leave and then we would be calling the Devil's Lake Police Department saying we have a, a child on the run. So that would be, you know, a call that the law enforcement officer would make.
I think, I think Steve, the target group when you're looking at attended care is more of a nonviolent status offenses, maybe is a, a child, uh, intruency, child who won't listen to the reasonable and lawful commands of their parent. If you're looking at somebody with, uh, drug alcohol issues or they're uncontrollable and violent, then that's probably one of your target groups, the attended care program.
Maybe the kids who go get a licenseee, they wouldn't be a, they wouldn't be a target group for this sort of value?
It is gonna depend upon the kid.
I think Ramsey County looked at this, I know they did as far as the alternative to, uh, housing in jail, tried to defer, gave them, you know, problems later in the teens. Ramsey County, I feel, probably won't work. You wanna see it or not? Adam wasn't involved with it, do you have any comments, Adam?
No, it's just, uh, it's a long time coming.
Yeah.
We've been trying to get it going for a while, we had to find a new, a new housing facility for it, uh, it seems though it's gonna work out well, so hopefully we'll, we'll see some, some positive outcomes for it. And I think part of the point that we're talking about is trying to get some data to determine what's going on with our youth here. I mean, that's one thing that we would try to, with the help of Representative Hoxton, to get a youth assessment center over the last session and, and we basically got turned out for lack of data. Uh, we, we don't know exactly what's going on up there, so hopefully we can, you know, show the need essentially.
Like Adam said, that's the whole, show the need, I'm sure it's here, so. It's basically Ramsey County runs the program right now, we'll have to see where it goes, I guess. Surely they don't wanna bite other counties in, if it's not going in the right direction. I've said that in a lot of meetings, uh, we feel it's gonna probably be beneficial to everybody, I guess we'd be very open to expand. Any other questions for our legislators or Tom?
Yeah, my question is often, maybe, the book. On the, the February incarceration sheet, I think we're showing, we have seventy percent of the inmate mandates were local, five counties in the city. Twenty-nine or, well, thirty percent were, uh, non-local, so federally BIA or anything else. The difference in revenue, there was far more revenue coming from the non-local sources than the local sources. To the, to the two hundred, uh, two hundred and twenty-six dollars a mandate for the non-local versus about sixty-seven for the local. I, I thought our non-local mandate was about seventy-five dollars, so what, where's the discrepancy in that funding, why is it such a higher number?
Seventy-five is the rate that we're contracting with other jurisdictions for. How I could further articulate what the differences or the reason for that difference, I'd have to look a little bit further into that. I don't know if Peggy has any gems to add to that, but
Just basic, and, and, and so I'm not really being able to break down why we're saving that much of the difference in those.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, just curious for the ask, if, if you're talking about total incarceration goals and to break down, uh, last year's total mandates, total local authorities were putting in fifty-three days. So that means we're essentially depending on forty mandates of non-local entities to fund the facility. So the question is, is, you know, like you said, we have to keep staff to go to one oh eight just in case we get individuals. Well, then the question is, and I'm not saying this is what we have to do, but maybe it has to be looked at, maybe our facility is too large. I mean, if we're, if, assuming we're not going to keep getting states and federal and all these inmates, uh, I mean, I, but I'm not saying that's what we need to do, but unless we can, we can get more federal inmates or state inmates to offset the costs, I mean
Just a few months ago, we were over a hundred days for, for several days. And, uh, just to try to explain, one thing I wanted to do to answer your question too is, I think another contributing factor could be that many more of our local folks are in and out
Yeah, that's
On the same day that they come, so that they're only charged that partial day charge, whereas folks from other jurisdictions are gonna always be a full day charge. So that, that'd be one, um, let's come to that, um. I lost the second part of my We, we've talked about that a lot, for instance, we've talked about, it was an outside, but like Tom said, the facility is set up, so it's difficult. That's not about sixty?
Not we could put out with?
That's what I was wanting, yeah.
Probably about sixty, uh,
Or Kathy can tell you that, uh, you might have, maybe today we have fifty-eight, let's say right now. You still have to segregate or separate a variety of different populations. First men and women, clearly, sight and sound, complete sight and sound separation. And then you have other issues between inmates that can range from any kind of things where they exist, can't be housed together. And we only have one max unit where you can have people in the same unit, but they, you can lock them in their individual cell. So even with lower numbers, we have people spread out in different units because of management reasons and, 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 uh, risk, risk management, basically.
So essentially, we still have to use all the units.
We do use all the
So we're better off just attempting to fill it up?
We are.
The only thing you save in a situation where you shut part of it down is the employee. Because you've still got the building expense because it's still there.
Yeah.
You can't leave them parts unheated.
Right.
Any of that, so ultimately, that's not the answer.
I would agree with that, because you also probably lose employees and then when you need them later on, you don't have. And then you pay it over time, then you're
I agree.
Then that whole other cycle starts.
That would lead to my secondary question, and if, if we're under the premise that we, obviously, the facility is what the facility is. So we're better off attempting to fill up to the one hundred and eight. Then are we better off attempting to maybe, and, and if you look at those discrepancies and how the funding's happening from non-local versus local, if we're only averaging fifty-five a day or so local, then that means we have the ability to put in fifty-three non-local if we can get it full. Well, then, does that mean we need to look at expanding budget, adding programming, and doing things like that to then hopefully pull those federal prisoners and state prisoners in? And we're gonna make more money off of them to offset the costs?
That's a great question, and I think the answer would be yes. If we could access the funding stream that's shut down largely by the Medicaid issue, um, we could then contract with people to come in and buy those services. And could advertise that such.
I guess that's my question, is that one of the things that's holding us back?
Mental health issue, I think.
Because even though we contract with the state and we say yes, we will, we want you to have so many beds available, it's not guaranteed that they're going to bring them. They will not guarantee that they will put someone here. That's straight up front contract with effect. Yes, we'll do it, but we will not guarantee so many people to fill that up. So even if you were to go for it, across some of your professionals, your, um, addiction counselors, your social workers, it could end up costing you more for the long run than you will ever bring in. It's, you know, it could be a rock and a hard place to do.
Yeah, it's, it's totally a catch-22 because, you know, is it gonna cost more than one? Two, presumably, if you have mental health, addiction treatment, all the programming necessary, you're gonna decrease recidivism rate rates. So then you're gonna pick up less people, so you're gonna have less people to put in the jails, so then you have a funding issue. So I realize that, but I guess I'm looking at it from an aspect of can we break even and can we get better outcomes?
Tom, do you have, do you have numbers, specific numbers of, of Medicare, Medicaid, uh, impact? It would be interesting. I mean, it would require us looking at how many inmates come in and stay, let's say, on a thirty hours, that we're on Medicaid before they can That, that would be, we'd have to find out, and are we collecting that information right now? I'm not absolutely sure, but I can easily talk to a nurse who is more intimately involved with those medical and mental health issues and find out that.
If I could just
Will you capture it if we answer that question?
If I could just add, it, it makes no sense for the, especially the folks that are on Medicaid expansion, the, so mandate that General North Dakota chose to do the Affordable Care Act, because the state of North Dakota paid, paid that standard plan, pay that plans in advance. So they're paying for, like, January, so if you go into jail on January tenth and you have that standard card, meaning expanded Medicaid, those are folks who are, are probably working for, and I think we have some of those that are in jails.
A lot.
They have that card and it's, it's canceled. When we've already paid, that's been a mystery to me, we've already paid, the state of North Dakota's already paid that insurance in advance upfront for the, the month, so you'd think they would still be able to use their standard card, the same as they could use their prosecution card if they had that paid for them on. So it's really, I, I'll
Just yesterday, I heard several other administrators going directly to your point, and they were directed to standard, they can't do another thing about it.
It's, yes, I'm, I'm trying to figure out
So far.
It's a policy change, right?
Yes, it is.
We need to go back to our, I just saw you were gonna get our house there, right?
Yeah.
It's an association, it's illegal. Because we got the stuff, everything else, and it was
Okay, well
Head to WIS, just right now, your, first year is up to date. Are you really ready to survive at seventy dollars a day and reach your, your comfort?
We're really gonna struggle this year. Last year, in two thousand and fifteen, we ended in a black. And as you can see, no roof for the building, it's gonna cost around one hundred and forty thousand. We've already paid half of the bill, we expect it to be done this month, and then we'll get half of the money. There's no fund under the general fund to take that audit, if you want, if you want, like I said. And the ceilings are approximately, cost fifty thousand dollars. And I don't imagine you're past that audit, a couple of ceiling picks. So, uh, that's a must. There's two hundred dollars that we have no fund under the general fund to take it out of. We talked about it at, probably need doing more coffee than Grand Forest, I'd say, maybe. Put another mill on each county for the upkeep of this building. I know the outside counties do not have an interest in the building, but they're all needed jail. So, uh, we've talked about it, it went anywhere. You couldn't put that in till next year, you may just do it now, if you'd like it. I'm sure the Ramsey County audit will probably blare anymore.
Well, back then, when I shared with the board of the temporary, in, in the building, and if you guys never, you had that surplus, you could never budget it in, my question would be, it was never in your budget?
There.
It should have been.
Up key.
Yes.
Yes.
But you still got that money, you got to
You got a lot, perhaps be taking on the tuition.
For?
For the surplus we have or the carryover gap money.
Right now, we've got a hundred and fifty thousand in certificates of deposit that we haven't touched, it's still sitting there, and we are, uh, probably about a hundred and fifty thousand, what we need to
Probably here. Cover the
Rock is three hundred.
That's before all the roof and that depends on
Yeah, we're, we've got that figured in, right? We've got that covered, got that covered.
It's a little bit of state mandate to
Major problems out there, we're gonna, gonna be very tight here. State mandates, if we keep three to four hundred thousand a hand, so, uh
You're pretty bummed with that, right?
Yeah, right, 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 yeah. At the end, if we value fourteen, it's a four hundred and seventy thousand dollar hit in the bed. I figure everywhere, so I'm not saying something, you know, she's crying about.
Well, if you want a meal, drop, or a bounty, you're looking at maybe bringing in
Two hundred? How much?
It'll be twenty-five.
This one meal up would be a total of what, twenty, two hundred and twenty-five?
Oh, let's see, it was close to the issue, it came in at, okay, a hundred and forty-three, one fifty-six, so it'd be two hundred and eighty thousand.
About two hundred and eighty pounds, you put a meal on it, a pound
Five meals, five pounds, a hundred meals.
What were the value? Dick?
Look, this Medicare, Medicaid, what's it changed, really doesn't affect the LEC because anybody that's came to the hospital, was in the twenty or whatever, the LEC is billed, they, they bill, they bill back to counties, so it brings in the individual county office problem. It doesn't affect those bottom lines for the LEC.
But it's still
It's a legal power.
Sure, certainly, but as far as the LEC goes, that's a past issue. So, I mean, it doesn't affect that, that's a real balance as well, LEC, county-wise, it's a big, city-wise, it's a big deal. So we were talking LEC stuff, but the Medicaid, Medicare thing really does not affect the budget of the LEC, it's the county's issue.
For the strictly medical issues, I would completely agree, Dick. For the ability to produce, to provide substance abuse services, mental health services, it does affect us. Yeah, very much.
But that, it comes with county's way too, I mean
Sure.
And one of the things, doing treatment in a county facility is very hard to do, because a lot of times, you don't have inmates long enough to study. Typically, the feds and the state, they'll do it halfway, or something like that.
Well, one thing I should probably share with all the counties, the demands of counties to build per month could run around eighty thousand dollars per month. So I'm sure Elizabeth wanted us to put that out there. So we're quite concerned with the county commissioner, Adam, too, very concerned.
We don't wanna let the legislators go on until they comment on what's the possibility of state monies coming through the counties under the concept of relief and robbery tax.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, there, at the state level, the statistics are certainly continue to reduce that there. But if you get anything more than that, I'd be very, I'd be very surprised if there's more of them other than mainly the school, maybe eight or twelve. Yeah, I don't, I certainly won't, I don't see any more than that happening, but anything, once we get out there, anything can happen.
I think that's all we got to do. The property tax, we got a lot here, the last receptions is direct authority, it's all funded, or it was all by itself, the property tax, leave. There's legislators who think this holiday time to go away, like, put an order, K, go a funding, should stay in the past, brings up other money.
I think the biggest impact, counties, will be the county social service issue. You know, we will, you know, that's part of the interim study. We're really worried about it. I don't know where it's going. I understand that it's in the governor's budget, it's about a hundred and ten, twenty million dollars expenditure to relieve the, to take over that county's social service program. I really don't know where that's coming. I'm forward, but we'll go, we'll go back to the states, and we'll be able to have that responsibility. Certainly for Ramsey County, that's a big deal. We have a huge issue here in Ramsey County. With the environment that we're in right now, I've heard, I've heard talk that the governor, part of the governor's plans to take that hundred million dollars and take it out with a twelve percent reduction in the county right now. Probably that's not that's something that will apply to the legislature and I. I know the governor is pretty well, is pretty well committed to relieving that burden on the counties, as are many legislators, there's these three who are sort of charged with trying to do that. That's a, that's a big hit for Ramsey County. We want that back.
Okay, any other questions, Adam?
Well, is that, the social services buy down to the ten mils, is that gonna continue? Is that, or that's in trying to lock, correct? Or is that something that has to be re-upped again in session?
Well, we've negotiated that out there on for Ramsey County. What Curtis was talking about, they have basically statewide.
Well, I know, we went from the buy-down, the eight effective counties that might down to the ten mil rate, is that, is that a guaranteed continuation or something?
That's what we're considering. There's no guarantees.
So you want to send Ron to the other end?
That's what my question is, how hard are we gonna have to go down the block?
On a positive note, the Senate Bill 2206 and what was done for the state as a profit tax buy-down, I got some figures yesterday, actually. And again, it's hard to measure the negative, but the counties would have most likely levied sixty-five billion as a poised to fifty-one point eight after the buy-down that occurred in 2206. And of course, Ramsey County further benefited by the being adjacent to an Indian reservation or having to stay hospital, who were the first ones to be up, to get more money through the grant process, which I know you guys worked really hard on yourself.
Any other questions for people on the table? If we're done by twelve, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. Everybody come to center over twelve minutes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.